Can help us understand whether we have captured your legislative direction.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Over here, Al. Did everybody get this they sent around this afternoon by email? Sign ordinance amendment recommendation worksheet. Does anybody have that or get it?
Mr. Perry, I have one really clean delta.
Oh, good. Okay, great.
It is posted publicly and worked out.
Okay.
Right.
You got Cooties? Guys, sit here. Glad to sit down, Mr. Chairman.
Good. You can do whatever you want. They don't tell them how to leave.
As long as you can hear me. Okay, Reed versus Town of Gilbert is kind of leading the First Amendment zoning case. There've been some, as Mr. Conch circulated. The Norfolk case was particularly interesting in its application of Reed v. Town. I don't want to get too much into the weeds, but there's some real good lessons from Reed v. Town that do apply to our zoning ordinance. And they're pretty simple concepts, actually. The first of all, which you need to know is, of course, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution made applicable to the states and to Rappahannock County through the Fourteenth Amendment. It's going to trigger a what's called a strict scrutiny review when you're talking about restrictions, prior restrictions on speech such as content monitoring of signs. So, in order to pass a strict scrutiny test, you've got, the government, meaning the county, would have to prove that they have a compelling state interest in the matter and that our ordinance is narrowly tailored to address that compelling state interest. That's a very, very high bar because a compelling state interest has to be an essential governmental function such as guarantee, you know, civil rights in schools, tax collection, those sorts of things. So, the next step down from that, an intermediate level of scrutiny, is going to involve what most zoning ordinances are going to deal with. And that is beautification issues, aesthetic issues, and traffic control. Oftentimes, as in the Town of Gilbert case, what you had was signs that were directing parishioners to an impromptu, or I guess you'd call it maybe like a tent revival type of church, directing them into it and announcing the time. And those signs were treated differently than other temporary signs. For instance, they had a category called political signs, which were also temporary, and ideological signs. Examples in modern days of that would be Black Lives Matter, Hate Has No Home Here.
By the way, you had a Freudian slip in your memo. You said, "Hope has no home here."
Oh, well, "hope." You know what I meant, all right? And so, those types of signs are all ugly, okay? That was the basic beef that the Town of Gilbert had with these signs and the proliferation of them. They're distracting to drivers, they said, and impact public safety in that way. And they're just inducements. They're just ugly. We don't want them here. The problem was that they set up different restrictions for the same eyesore. So, the temporary signs directing people to the term service had to be removed within thirty minutes or something. Some really tight, very, very restrictive zoning about these types of temporary signs, whereas there was no limitation on the duration of ideological or political signs. Yet they posed the same eyesore and public safety problem that the temporary directional signs posed. Supreme Court said, "Well, how are you going to justify that? If the goal of the zoning ordinance is to declutter and beautify the Town of Gilbert, how do you justify that? You can't treat one versus the other differently based on the content of the message." That's the lesson of Town of Gilbert, which is not all that revolutionary. Now, some people have been going around saying that the hashtag that attaches to Town of Gilbert is that if you have to read the sign, your zoning ordinance is in front. That's not true. Town of Gilbert did not overturn a hundred years' worth of precedent regarding commercial speech versus non-commercial speech. And those are key sorts of categories. Commercial speech generally is going to be regulated at a much lower, what they call intermediate level of scrutiny than your non-political speech. Now, there's also government speech. They mentioned one of the essential government's functions is tax collection. So, some places, not so much in Virginia, but other areas of the country, they'll have different places where people can pay their taxes and they'll roll out a big old electronic interior lit billboard by the side of the road that says, "Pay your taxes here," okay, same as Edith, Edith Joe's. But, and that's an essential government function. That's not going to even implicate, government speech doesn't even implicate the First Amendment. So, what you're concerned with primarily is the zoning body, when you're looking at this zoning ordinance, is that you want to protect, your primary goals are going to be anti-proliferation of annoying signs. Essentially, that's, I would imagine, going to be the sense of the commission is that we don't want these, you know, ugly little signs proliferating everywhere. Commercial signs, you go to Edith Joe's, sale here, fifty percent off, all that kind of stuff, cluttering up the countryside. So, when you're considering what areas of the code needs to be addressed, you need to keep in mind the paramount lesson of this Reed v. Town is you can't treat those types of political signs many differently than the other ugly signs. They're all on the same footing. Ugly signs, gotta be less than this. That's going to apply to all ugly signs, no matter what the content is, okay? That's the lesson, the new lesson of Town of Gilbert. Now, so what I've done is I've created that little worksheet, which I think I've been included in my own file folder. And so, it's pretty self-explanable. When you're going through the code and you're looking, well, thank you, sir. And you're going through the code and you're looking at things, you need to ask yourself a few questions about what you want to do. If you follow this guide, that'll keep you on the right road constitutionally when you answer these questions. The first thing is you're going to have to do is identify what kind of governmental interest is implicated in the sign ordinance that you wish to amend or add. Now, if you're just going to strike something, obviously, a lot of this doesn't apply. But if you're going to put in new language of whatever nature, this stuff does apply. Most of it's going to be category B, I would submit, okay? I didn't go with obscenity into this, in this, because I really don't think that that's going to pertain to your deliberations too much. We don't have any kid and go-gos here. We don't have any porn houses. We don't have any pole dancing or anything like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. You go, "yeah," and when you get into public nudity, that's at the far, sort of the outer ring of Saturn as far as First Amendment stuff, you know? There is a lot of regulation that can be done in that area. But for purposes of now, I kind of skipped it. If you want me to talk to you about that at some later date, I would be glad to do that. Government speech and First Amendment's not implicated. So then, you've got to decide is it commercial or non-commercial. Make that mental note to yourselves. Then you need to find out, you know, why are we regulating this? What is the purpose here? What is it we're trying to achieve? And then you've got to decide whether the regulation you want is going to make distinctions between commercial and non-commercial, and is there a good reason to do so? There may be. There very well may be. That's something you need to actually grapple with. So, you then decide, once you've said, "Well, we've got a substantial state interest in the regulation of the speech." Is it content neutral and is it viewpoint neutral? So, Town of Gilbert is a case about viewpoint neutrality, where you have the same type of signs, the same basic problem, but they are, and they don't come in and say, "You can't say this on a sign, and this on a sign, and this on a sign." What they come in and say is that, hey, these viewpoints are going to be favored over these viewpoints implicitly because, like I said, the same eyesore in the proliferation of the directional signs was treated much more harshly in the ordinance than was that of the political or ideological signs. So, that's the next step. Then you've got to say, if you're going to treat one category differently than the other, decide why. Because here again, there may be a good reason to do so. Generally, there's not. And if there is, then we have to craft an argument that is going to be constitutionally firm. Generally, that's going to be on the edge of an issue that might be in between substantial governmental and a compelling one. Is, now, the easiest way to regulate signs is to treat them all the same. Every sign's going to have to comply with the same set of regulations that relates only to content neutrality. And that is dimension, construction, number, place, the manner of lighting, how many are allowed on a lock, how they can be affixed to the ground. Those are the types of physical characteristics of signs that is fully within the purview of the zoning ordinance. And that's not going to implicate any kind of constitutional problem. Now, sometimes you need, you might get on here and get on the cusp of something where you're not sure. So, the next question is, if it's not regulated, what harm is going to befall? If we don't act in this particular area, what's going to happen? What's the negative impact of not acting, of not legislating? And that's an important question. Only, but that here again would be only rarely implicated. Key concepts, I'll list them now. I won't read them to you. I'll just go simply through those things. Yeah, I did make this Freudian slip here.
Yeah, it was Freudian.
No, it was. It was. Hope has no home here. That's a side out front of the prison, I guess. So, I've kind of spelled out those types of things, explained Reed v. Town. So, that brings me to the next thing I want to bring to your question, which I think is extremely helpful, and that's the LGA's model sign ordinance. That's a really super helpful document. I hope you all have that. It's, I think we've provided it to the board of supervisors. Have you not?
It's been provided to the planning commission board in the past. I don't want to have it for more attention.
This is the version three. There may be a fourth version. I don't think so. I'm trying to find it. This is the 2018 version, and it has comment, this is post-Gilbert, too. This has a lot of comment in it from the Local Government Attorneys Association, which is a very learned body. I get about, I don't know, fifty or sixty emails from them today. And they like to type over this. And in this, there's a definition of a sign, of a sign, which I really urge you all to look at. It has some language in it that I would suggest striking, but it's minor in nature. But it does give an excellent example of how a sign should be defined in light of all the latest case development, as well as carving out a section for public art. Public art is not as problematical as it seems at first glance, if you're not intended. What I would urge, if you're going to think about a public art section, which may encompass things like what has occurred in Sperryville with the Welcome to Sperryville sign, or what you see over in the town array, these murals on the sides of buildings. I think I provided the board a set of photographs a number of years ago from the northern net. And sometimes it may be some of commercials in nature. I think I remember one was a dentist office, had a funny-looking alligator with a toothbrush. But it was really quite charming. And then, of course, there was the old Coca-Cola bottling company where they had, you know, the classic old Coca-Cola lady with the cat on its head and stuff. It was quite good. And it was, it did have a commercial nature to it, some of it. Some of it didn't. Some of it was simply about oysters and crabs and welcome to Montross and that kind of stuff. If you're considering something like that, it's, public art is also defined in this definition section of the LGA model ordinance. What needs to be done, if you're going to have public art, is a permitting system for sure. So that the permit goes to the zoning administrator, who can make an initial determination of whether or not it qualifies as public art. And then it needs to be reviewable automatically at the BZA level so that there is, I guess what you'd say, not authoritarian decision by the zoning administrator, but it is reviewed by a superior body, such as the Board of Zoning Appeals, to make sure that it's public art. Obviously, the fear in that is if you allow one type of public art that may be somehow controversial, that you're going to have to allow other stuff. And that is one of the problems with it is that when you allow one type, of course, it's the camel's nose under the edge of the tent, and a whole camel may come on through with some perhaps undesirable result. However, for the most part, the zoning administrator is going to be able to handle that. And if the downside to, okay, let's say you have a decision that's appealed and it ends up at the appellate level, it may be that the zoning ordinance gets stricken. That particular part of it, by the court, well, then that ends your problem. If it's stricken, it's gone. It's not going to be a problem again. So, I would suggest anyway.
Well, Ben, if it's stricken, doesn't that mean that they're, whatever they're doing, they can do?
For that, yeah. But if the process for getting that permit is considered invalidated, then what do you got?
Wait, I'm going to confuse the process or the substance.
Well, both if it gets stricken.
So, you can write a new ordinance or something.
Well, you could, or you could just not, if you say, "Well, this is no good anymore," strike an alley ordinance. So then there would be no longer a category of public arts going forward in the future. So, the guy who complains has been running for the rest to come along and weren't going to put in something controversial. I mean, that's the net result, the net practical result of something like that. But then, yeah, the downside of it, it is something truly obnoxious unless you volunteer to take it down. You know, the court says you can put it up. Well, you put it up. So, there is a downside to that. And I don't think there's any sort of, you know, a priori way to really envision language that would encompass all negative things that could possibly come along. That's almost impossible. That's why I think you need to leave a measure of it as a practical matter to the zoning administrator as an initial determination with the hedge of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
If you have no zoning, no public art ordinance, does that, and it's never been in there, does that kind of get rid of the whole public art idea?
It does. Yeah, I think so.
It would be a sign. Right?
It'd be treated as a sign. Yeah, right. Treated as a sign.
I would say if it fit the definition of sign, if you have this continuum of, "I paint the side of my building one color," not art. Two colors, probably not art. Three colors, well, maybe. Fifteen colors that are arranged in a particular way, that's probably art. So, you know, it's not just block letters.
But it might not be a sign, though, then.
It might not be a sign. So, you know, somewhere on that continuum, you turn into conveying a message to somebody which may fit a definition of sign, which then may need to be permitted, may not be the right size. So, you know, trying to legislate in words some of those things is impossible.
It'd be, yeah, that's a damn good one.
Well, just, I mean, I'm just reading on your column, Art. I'm just reading the public art definition in the LGA. I assume that's what that is up there. And it says, "It means items expressing creative skill or imagination in a visual form, such as, such as painting or sculpture, which are intended to beautify or provide aesthetic influences to public areas or areas which are visible from the public realm." I'm not sure what the public realm is, but anyway, I guess it means public areas. But I mean, that is such kind of a, I mean, I'm a lawyer in several uses, some of the others aren't. But to me, that is, that runs the risk of being void for vagueness because an awful lot of signs, I mean, using some of the things that you talked about, like Edith Joe's or Pay Your Taxes, I mean, it's just letters. But if you put some, you know, jazzy stuff on it and some, you know, stars or whatever, and you use script instead of block letters, you know, then people start saying, and have said, "Oh, well, that's art because I didn't just use block letters. I used creative skill or imagination to make my sign. So, now it's not a sign, it's art."
Exactly.
And so are you. So, anyway, I would wonder if you would comment on that.
Well, I'll give you a good example. I found a sign in an antique store when we first built our place down at the river. It said, "Bob's Fish House, Maine's finest place," spelled P-L-A-I-C-E. That's another word for flour. And which I'm sure you've taught me, yeah.
P-L what?
P-L-A-I-C-E. It's a British word for place, flagrant for flour. And so, it's got this gorgeous carved ass relief flatter beautifully painted. It's got gorgeous gold lettering. It's antique. It's huge. It's probably six by four or something. It's a big sign. Beautiful. Forked out, a hundred and fifty bucks quarter, whatever. And that is a good example of a crossover thing. The you're talking about right here, some of the British pub signs are good examples of that. The Eagle and the Child, famous example in Oxford, where you've got this absolutely gorgeous piece of art, but it is advertising a commercial establishment. That's the name of the pub. So, there is crossover. I guess there is no way to really legislate that line where it crosses over. That's why I think the only answer to it is to leave it to the initial determination of the zoning administrator, which is it? Now, one thing you can probably do that's going to make this a little easier is define the size of what public art is so that Bob's Fish House doesn't fit into that definition. I'm not saying this is the end-all of the definition in the LGA because most of the time when you think of public art, think about going up Route 28, going into Manassas, and there's that big old barn out there. It's got the big hogs and all that. You know what I'm talking about? And I thought it was a barbecue place advertisement, but it's not. It's just some farmer, you know, who's painted up his barn. Do you want to create an ordinance that's going to forbid that kind of creative expression, which I would submit most people driving by, they're actually enjoying? Or are you going to lead that to the sound discretion of the zoning administrator to decide, "Well, this is public art, and it fits into public art because it's bigger than what, you know, signs that you allow?" Because I'm going to assume you're not going to allow signs that are as big as billboards. So, public art would have to be, you know, that's, I'm just making a suggestion. I'm not trying to tell you it's new. But that's one way to solve it, Dave, is to make it, public art is also large in scope.
Okay, now, I've got two. Based on what she said, I have two. And if anybody else wants to ask questions, that's feel free, okay?
But I'm not saying I have all the answers here. I'm just saying, from my understanding of things, this is how you could achieve them, and I think, with past constitutional laws.
Well, my first comment is, and I'm going to turn it to Michelle because she and I are the only people in the room that have ever been zoning administrators. And if I was zoning administrator, I would be cringing when you say the first crack at it's going to be the zoning administrator, whether it's me or Michelle or whoever it is, because to make it, to make the, unless it's very, I mean, if that's the definition, you're just going to, you know, it's an unpopular enough position as it is without putting that kind of stuff on the zoning administrator. So, that's one issue that I think.
You're going to lose in court.
What?
You're going to lose in court.
Well, who's going to lose?
The zoning administrator.
Well, I don't know that she has, because it depends on what he or she decides. But there's going to be a tremendous amount of pressure to basically approve everything if it says art. Number two, the other issue is I'd like for you to comment on the Wagmore Dogs case, which is actually before the Reed versus Gilbert case. And that was down, I think, in Arlington, Alexandria. And in that case, they had a bunch of pictures on the whole side of their building that was like dogs, dog food, or bones, or, you know, and it wasn't, it didn't have any, I don't think, letters. But it was their trademark picture of their little doggies and their little dog food trays. And everybody knew that's what it was. So, I mean, you could, I mean, I'm sure there's lots of examples of that kind of a product, which, you know, may, gets the picture of it, that would fit the definition of public art.
It may.
Is really a commercial sign because it's kind of like a trademark. And kind of like, you know, we have a sign in the county that's now become such a, call it celebre or whatever you want to say, has crossed over from, to me, even without anything more, it's, the image of it has a commercial, you know, value.
Well, so, you know.
Comment on that.
And so, you know, there's lots of things, a lot of grain silos have these types of artistic expressions, you know? It's chore time, right? And it's on a big old grain silo. It's advertising the manufacturer of the grain silo, but it's also, you know, sort of retro art. It's retro mid-century commercialism, which is sometimes considered by other people to be vogue. So, we're not ever going to come up with a definition of all that is art. It's like the famous quote from, I guess it was Alfred Wendell Holmes, who said, "I don't know how to define it."
Harry Blackman.
Yeah, Blackman. He said, "I don't have to define it, but I know it when I see it." So, a lot of it has to be a commonsensical application of, I think, a combination of size and looking at what is proposed. I'm not so sure that it would be constitutional to make a public art exception, as is in some of these areas here, to a commercial application of public art. So, I'm saying that the only answer, if you want to avoid any kind of a mouse trap down the road, is to forbid it altogether. But if you're going to do that, you're going to go down the road to allow it. You have to, at some point, somebody has to make a decision. And I submit that the appropriate person, since it is a zoning issue, would be the zoning administrator, but you may have a better idea. And I don't intend to tread on anybody's toes about who should make that decision. But just as far as constitutionality, if it's going to be, if it is commercial in nature where you can easily see where someone with that kind of skill that did the art in Sperryville could turn it into an advertisement for his business, it's still, I think, in a lot of people's minds, is an attractive work. And I don't think can be said not to be art. But from a zoning perspective, what you have to do is decide, are we going to allow public art and maybe some of the things that might not be what you would particularly personally want to see? Are they going to slip through? Well, because the answer to that is probably yes, if you're going to apply the standards for even handling across the board.
The issue that I see in all of what you've said, when you, if you go down that road, no matter who makes the decision, and no matter what board it goes to, you know, as well as I know, that it's going to be a popularity contest, which then may be great once it's approved or disapproved, depending on what the outcome is. But if it goes to court, it's going to invite court challenges, it seems like to me. If, because they're, because like the Harry Blackman quote, right? It's, you know, I, this is art because I say it because some group said so. And it's too difficult, or the court may say, that the definition is too ambiguous. And so...
Well, I think here, everybody can foresee that. I mean, that's not a difficult argument to make against this sort of thing. But what I would also point out, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I don't care personally. I'm not here to advocate a position on it. But what I can say is that it seems to have worked homogeneously in other jurisdictions in Virginia. Page being one that comes to mind, and Gordonsville being another that are nearby. And there are other areas that are just, you know, filled up with it. It's become like a cottage industry for starving artists, you know? It's the new, the new front row. The boy artist, you know?
There are tiny rainbows on the building.
Yeah, rainbows. There could be, you know, all kinds of, you know, wagons. There's all kinds of stuff, right? Pumpkins, whatever.
Pumpkin. But what if the Chrysler dealer paints an airflow on the side of his building?
Well, there's one of those in Page. There's the old Ford dealership there. It's got the kids looking in the window, brand-new Ford, you know, 1952 Ford or whatever, sitting in the showroom at the time. Does that make it, you know, undesirable? That's where I think the board, my client, would appreciate the sense of this commission is to the extent, what is the extent to which Rappahannock County is willing to accept perhaps the occasional flying ornament that is perhaps objectionable? To what extent is that a risk? Uh, to what extent is that a risk that our zoning ordinance is willing to take, if at all?
Let me ask you another question that everyone's talking about this week, and that's the question of standing. What, if we're gonna have public signs or art like this that some people may think is great, and others think is objectionable, is it, is it lawful to include in the ordinance some statement that would expand the, I guess, or, or put in an expansive or permissive, more permissive standard for standing of people that wanna challenge it? Like if you don't, obviously, if, if somebody puts something up, and it gets approved as public art, if that goes in, and you live across the road and they're looking at it, obviously you have standing, but what if you mile down the road.
Sometimes in castles.
What if you're, what if you're driving to work every day, from rain to light?
You know what Friends of Rappahannock says as well as I do? And uh, I don't think that the county board by ordinance can expand upon uh, anything that's not given in the Code of Virginia. And of course, we have established precedent as to what allows a person to have standing, can't standing in a zoning case. That's another reason why I like the idea of the zoning administrator making these decisions. So, it, I don't think that the Code could include a statutory remedy for zoning to have something like that removed, absent a grant of authority from the general consent. Uh, so, and that would be my, one of my, you know, I'm not gonna give away the whole show, but the standing part, you know, I've got something I think on. There's a trick up every lawyer's sleeve about standing. So, um, that is what I would envision, my knee jerk reaction would be that, that uh, Miss Curry and I probably would say that you don't have, unless you point to a section of the code that says that the, uh, ordinance can establish statutory standing.
Right, no, I just, I just wanna make the point, which I agree with you a hundred percent, I, I don't think that you can. I think if you don't need, that there's gonna be a very, if something gets approved, and somebody wants to challenge it, there's a very limited number of people that can do that, that are unqualified.
That's right.
To be able to do that.
So they gotta make friends with their neighbors before they go in and make an application for it. Go around and say, hey, you gonna, you gonna give me a hard time over this? They say, no. You know, after a certain point in time, I guess, you know, you're gonna have other arguments that after a lapse of time. But yeah, no one has the right to generally enforce as an individual, uh, the rights of the public in, in Usher or anything else. So, uh, and, so as far as litigation standpoint, without getting too far in the weeds, because I'm sleepy. Uh, so uh.
I could eat a palace.
Get a much chug one. And it's one of those things where, now, I mean, you can try to envision every doomsday scenario, and are we gonna lose in court? Well, if we do so what, I mean, that's what the process is built in for, okay? Is if the zoning administrator looks at the Campbell suit, you know, retro ad that says, welcome to Flint Hill, um, you know, or, or, you know, the Rappahannock cannery, or something like that, that's, you know, it's beautiful, it's well done. Uh, and, and says, okay, well, that's public art, and it fits the size that's gonna constitute public art. And, and, and Fubby Saddle doesn't object, and his neighbors up and down the road don't object. What the hell have we lost, okay? You know, except for perhaps something that people are gonna wanna look at, and would be proud of. That sounds like a pitch forward, it's not, that's just an argument that I'm, I'm throwing out there for you all to consider as to why such a thing might be desirable and good. If, if you decide the risk is too great, then what you do is you don't have a public art definition. You treat everything as a sign. That's the, that's the.
The way we do now, basically.
The way we do it now.
And, and that is permissible.
To say.
To leave it alone, to leave it all in the sign.
As long as, as long as every sign is treated the same. As long as the ordinance, as long, when you're asked to enforce it, the zoning administrator, which oftentimes may be a very unpopular thing as well. Uh, if you're asked to enforce it, you just take your measuring tape out there, and you decide. And you look at it, say, well, this is made out of uh, rosewood, and it's not made out of plywood, so sorry. Or it's two inches too high, boom, start the chainsaw like Liv does in the commercial, and saw off the nail off, okay?
It still requires the zoning administrator to make the call whether a sign or not meets the definition of a sign. Which is not always black and white, as I know the word.
Yeah, it's not always that.
The dimensions are black and white.
Well, right, but this could be a very, the site of a barn that's painted fifteen colors. And it may not meet the definition of sign.
A barn just turns fifteen different colors all on its own.
Exactly.
It's not a sign.
Not a sign.
So, it did.
Well, then, you know, does it meet our definition of sign?
She's got to decide that.
What about a sign?
Because if she wants, if, as an agent of a county, she's going to issue a zoning violation because they have a smiley face on the side of their barn, then somebody's gotta prosecute that, and win in court.
Nothing, they can just do nothing like they usually do.
Well, then we won't issue the zoning violation at all.
The difference of size, aside through zoning category, agricultural district versus terrestrial district, is that, I mean, if they say the same type of thing, if it's a farm, a foreign market store versus a farm, what's the real difference?
Well, herein, if, if it is protection of Usher, and not proliferation of annoying uh, commercial, you know, messages, uh, or any type of sign whatsoever that's a distraction from the countryside and they have drivers looking at the sign running along the road, if that's the justification, which I submit for zoning is the only two that's really gonna work. I think it's gonna run into, we can count problems. To say that it's less obnoxious in the, in the agricultural district than it is in the rural residential district, it's gonna be a hard sell.
Why, because what about, the speed limit's different in the agriculture district, the speed limit's fifty-five, and in other districts, it may be twenty-five.
That, that's an argument that, that the county attorney would probably be making to, before the court, but I just don't find it very persuasive. Under town, now, under the old, under pre-town, I'd say you could probably win on something like that either. But uh, under, under the town case, I, I just don't think so, because they really, I think, one of the operative quotes of Justice Thomas was, and I'm kinda be kinda compelling myself, is that uh, assuming that the town beautification goal is compelling for the purposes of this case, which you're not saying it was, because it's not, it's, it's, uh, the ordinance fails strict scrutiny because cannot, the town cannot claim the strict limits on temporary direction signs, while allowing other types of signs that create or contribute to the same problem are allowed. So, and I, I, I know that sounds like I'm boiling it down to simplicity, but that to me is really the cross case. Is if it's bad because it's ugly in one part.
Great, I understand, but the, the question that I have is not that question that Justice Thomas put out. That question is the opposite to me, that if you allow public art, and you call whatever that vague bunch of gobbledygook that I just read before, and I'll read again, uh, is the standard for public art, then it's the people with the commercial and other signs that have more restricted, are gonna say, why is my real estate sign, or my Edith Joe's, or my, you know, shop apartment, why is my sign, why are you picking on me? That's what I'd be concerned about.
They'd be right.
You're opening a door.
I'm not.
For public art, you're opening the door for all the other kinds of signs, which will say, we're being treated in an unfair manner.
That's why I brought up the Bob's, uh, Maine's finest place, because there is a crossover between public art of a large, at large scale, and these commercial things like the Purina logo, or the Coca-Cola bottling company thing. Where those types of commercial messages would also qualify as public art. And I, I'm telling you that in order to pass constitutional muster under this town case, that would have to be the case if you're gonna have a valid orders. So if you don't want that, and that's what I think the board supervisors wants to hear from you on. If the planning commission says the people of Rappahannock don't think that, that allowing these types of large-scale public art messages, or whatever they may be, they may be, you know, it could be a giant black bear in her cubs, which has no commercial message, uh, on the side of a barn. Or it could be, uh, it could be a really art, artistic, you know, Edward Hopper version of the old uh, Sperryville, you know, Main Street, with a sign hanging out that says Edith Joe's for the restaurant there in town. And that implicit in that is a commercial message, but it's also a nostalgic piece of artwork. So, if the people of Rappahannock don't want to risk that type of visual intrusion, then that's what the board supervisors is gonna wanna hear from you on. Uh, they're asking you to advise on that sort of topic.
Good answer.
Sure.
So, I, I'm listening to this, I think that one of the challenges is trying to define broadly what public art is. But what about the legal consequences of taking on a smaller piece of it? Because a lot of the examples that you cited, that may or least objectionable, where somebody owns a building, or owns a silo, which they, it's up to them to decorate in some way, and so, you know, they, they decorate it with a, with a mural or, or some decorative uh, manner, as we've been discussing. Could we not take a narrow carve-out of sign for a specific type of art, like mural, that is decorating an otherwise, you know, a, 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 a structure that's used for something else as a, as a small in, in step in this direction that is much more easily defined than public art writ large?
Hold on, can you pump that up a little bit, so you can read the definition of sign? There you go, that's good, so we can see both public art and sign. Because I think there's your answer here, that, that, there's the definition of sign even in the LGA thing. And I mean, if it's got writing, letter, pictorial, presentation, illustration, or decoration, emblem, device, symbol, or trademark, flag, dependence, or any other device, figure, or character visible to and designed to communicate informative or information to persons in a public, so if, I, I don't know, I guess that's where you draw the line.
There's actually two, two options.
I'll bring up on that, so.
There's two, two options for the definition of sign, just to be clear.
So if we had a definition of sign, but then we said murals are things that are painted on the side of buildings used for something else, a barn, or an agriculture building, or a commercial building, and murals are not signs, period. Then we're not into all this other stuff.
How are you gonna define a new art?
I just said, it's, it's, it's something painted on the side of a building.
Well, lose that something, that's my question, what if it, what if it has letters or words?
You know, I, I, I'm not, I'm not concerned about that, I mean, and this as an example, if we, we could, could we legally define a small carve-out for certain types of public art based on clearly measurable uh, definitions? Like the way I paint my building, and, and, you know, I, I, maybe there's, there's room here. And the idea that the only way we can address this is to try to define all of art is, is uh, is setting up a straw man that is uh, too extreme.
Well, I think, I think you're asking the right kind of question, uh, Mr. White. Uh, I, I conflate in my own mind the definitely, and I, I don't wanna speak for Gary, but I think we both are all the same way, but that there is no difference between a mural and public art under this definition. Uh, so, what, what I'm urging is that, that if it is to be of even a modicum of control over this sort of, of art, or decoration, or painting, or whatever you wanna end up calling it, you don't need to define art, you just need to define uh, the size of it. If you're gonna allow it, what I'm saying is you gotta allow it all. Whether it's ugly pigs or pretty pigs, whether it's fat cows or skinny cows, whether they are cartoonish, or whether they're, you know, the precision of, of, you know, the nineteenth century uh, you know, sporting, sporting arts. You have to allow it, you can't, you can't discriminate, you can't call a mural, you know, something that has fifteen colors or sixteen colors. You have to allow it all. So, the only, what I'm urging to reconsider is, the hook to make any difference between a sign and public art, I think, is the scale. Uh, it's not what is contained therein. There is a myriad of objectionable images that could result. But as far as, if, if you're gonna say no to this one because of the content of it, or its quality, then you've got a problem. So the zoning administrator simply has to say, how big is it? What's it gonna look like? She has to say, well, that's art of some kind, it don't have to be good, bad, or, you know, commercial, non-commercial, or anything else. Uh, otherwise, you're gonna run into town Gilbert problems in my view, probably. But, like I said, I'm not here advocating for a position, I just wanna let you know that it is possible to have a rational basis to have a public art section. Uh, which I know is of a concern to, to, to people in the county.
And you're saying that, that can a public art be a different size limitation than a sign?
I think so.
And, and.
In fact, I think it ought to be a minimum.
What?
I think it ought to be a minimum.
What do you mean a minimum?
In other words, a public art should be of, should be defined in some way in, in terms of size. Most of what we're talking about is stuff that's on the side of buildings.
Would we rather have a maximum?
To me, that's the answer.
Um, well, there could be a maximum as well.
Well, that's just for multiple people that.
They, could we, could we speak of public art, since it's public quote art, that it would be something that uh, the board of supervisors perhaps could uh, lease for a, like, a year? If it was to be put up, the board supervisor would lease it and own it, and then their lease expired, unless they're wondering to do it, they would have to come down.
I, I have to think about that, I don't know how much that the ownership question. I don't know, I'd have to think about it, I haven't considered it in any of such.
And I don't think ownership equals government speech, is what you're, that's where you're going.
Mr. Todd, I think.
Sure.
On this, on what are they, for, for us, not as warm as it was, and total, total work. So, you know, talking about all these things, it brings to mind, of course, the old mail pouch, tobacco that, that.
Mail pouch?
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a message, but it's also art, you know, and it has evolved into an iconic symbol that you see it everywhere, you just know what it is. And then you look at the work of Andy Warhol, at everything he's done with his famous Campbell suit, and everything else that he, he, he painted and did, installation art and all that, and all his work, his work's eighty thousand dollars. He's a piece of nothing worth five thousand dollars he's done. And, you know, following my, my son and his artwork, and looking at things that, you know, that's happened around the world, you know, some of this installation art can be, you know, take a year or two to install, and, and, and they be fifty miles long. So, I guess we're talking, the board of supervisors gave us direction, or somewhat, to come up with this, but I'm not presuming to know the will of the people of Rappahannock County, and what the general consensus is, and what they want. I think there's, there's people that, that maybe wanna see a lot, and maybe other people don't wanna see anything. And they think a wooden barn is better than a painted barn. And, so, I guess, really, what we're gonna have to do is, is come up with a framework that we have to fill in. But that's gonna have to be based upon some, some, some public hearings, meetings that we have to have and hear, engage, some comment from the public, that's gonna be far more detailed than what we're gonna come up here tonight going back and forth. So, I think we need a framework, and, and that the public's gonna have to cook for us a substantial distance, and we're gonna have to finish it, and, and, you know, give it to the board. And I think we have a number of public hearings, it goes to show what the public desire is. I agree a hundred percent, and I think that that's.
This is not something we're gonna turn out here.
They, 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 they're not, and that's, that's why I've also recommended, I, I guess at least informally, uh, to, to Gary and Michelle that, that it might be prudent, and I'm just speaking as the board's lawyer, and this is what I've been telling the board, it might be prudent to take up a couple of sections of the sign ordinance incrementally, so that you a couple of sections of the sign ordinance incrementally so that you can get a better sense of what the public really wants in, in getting this kind of thing done. It might be, might not make sense to take up a definition of public art with the, whether or not you're going to have illuminated, internally illuminated signs. You know, it might be good to kind of split some of that stuff up.
That's sort of one of my questions. Right, right now, I mean, have you made a, I don't know, comprehensive is the right word? We just finished the comprehensive plan, so still going to start slinging that word around too much, but, uh, have you made a list? I mean, as I go through the existing ordinance, uh, and obviously there's some definitions that are obviously just in, in flagrant kind of violation of reverses or the, they're flagrantly infirm in the weight of, or invalidated, like, uh, like real estate signs is in here. Well, you know, and then there are different.
Well, political signs that have to be taken down days after the election. If that's going to pass muster under town, I don't think so.
No, that's right. So have you made a list or a study yourself of, of, in other words, if we just wanted to fix what's flagrantly wrong, have you got a list of those things?
Uh, I think I have a partial list that I started when Mr. Dameron was here, um, but I haven't worked on it in a couple of years. So the answer is no, I don't have a list. Do I have an idea of where I'd go with it? Yeah. Uh, I, I do know that there's a lot of, of stuff that needs fixing. Some of it's easy fix, though. You just delete the stuff.
Right. Well, I, I, I think, uh, that, that that would be helpful if, if it's not a lot of trouble and if you've already started. Should give the commission as a starting point, the sections and the definitions and I really don't think there's that much. I know there's the political sign issue, there's the temporary sign that I think is a problem. You, you can't, because the, the temporary signs are regulated on the basis of their content. And the real estate, political, and these kind of things, you can't, I mean, that squarely, uh, the, what the Reed case was all about, temporary directional signs, well, if they're ugly, they're ugly. You can't, if they're temporarily ugly, you can't say, well, and what is PPS? Just like what is public art? What is temporary?
You can't put a progress on tape.
And plus, we've got some, you know, well, this is, we got, we got, we got, I think in here, sort of some temporary signs that are 30 days for like auctions or a week or something. There's, there's like auctions, and then we've got political signs that you can only put them up for a certain period of time before the election, then they have to be down by a certain time. And then we've got some other, you know, temporary signs. So we've got two or three different categories of temporary signs, I think, that, that's obvious. So what I'm driving at is can you generate for us or for the commission the, the, the specific sections?
If the board of supervisors tells me to do that, I will.
So do we have to ask them to ask you?
Well, I think, yeah, my change of command is through him and, and how the board wants me to spend my time is up to the board, but I'd be glad to do it if that's what you're asking, if I am so directed.
That's, that's, that's something you could do.
I think there's a couple of ways to go at that, though, because what does the commission, how do you want to handle temporary signs? How do you want to handle animated signs?
Well, I, I don't know that anybody has, I mean, obviously illuminated thing is another ambiguous, ambiguous kind of guess, but I, I don't know that the commission's fully cognizant of the, the, the really infirm.
So what do you want to do?
There's some things that's put, let's, there's a couple of categories, two or three categories. There's stuff that's clearly doesn't pass muster under Reed versus Gilbert and has to be fixed. There's other things like the public art thing, which is discretionary, which you want to add or you want to do this because of various things that have come up or we've got, you know, that, that are discretionary. And then I, I guess then there's other, I'm not sure what the third category is, but the, but the ones that we really, where we've got something that's in the current ordinance that is per se unenforceable, I think we need to start with that list. So that's my opinion.
Right. I support you in that because one of my observations about these other templates and examples from other jurisdictions is all of them are far more complicated in the number of zones and the, and the types of, types of settings that they have. I mean, Rappahannock is much, uh, for, you know, for all our benefit, a simpler place in terms of our zones and the types of things we're dealing with. So I agree with you that rather than start with some other model and try to fit it to Rappahannock, I could support an approach where we try to fix what's wrong with our ordinance.
Right. Starters, like you said, step by step. And then if people go further, then we can do that at a later time. But right now, we sort of, again, we're in a bad situation because we've got some stuff in there that just came in force. Well, Henry.
So I, I think, I'm sorry, I'm going to. Well, no, I think we've got the definition there, Airby, and, and it's a little more expanded than what we have. We basically have something, some very similar language.
Very similar.
Sign ordinance. So I think we can take what's there and we can work on what we have and we can find other problem areas and then maybe we can ask the attorney or the way you know that. If it said, if it said those questions, I think the board would.
I have a perfect solution to this finally. This sign ordinance, is this the first one we ever did?
I mean, is this the first ordinance? It was amended somewhat in 2004, but most recently.
No, 86, no, there, I, I think signs were regulated under the 74 ordinance. Or if they were, they were, it was just by size, it was very.
It was by size. I've got that 74.
It wasn't, it didn't go into all this detail, no. Because I, I, I mean, I remember.
So the 74?
No, 86 it came in.
So, so we did, we did well with the ordinance for 210 years, and then we perceived there was a problem for the last, uh, 34 years. So why don't we just do away with the ordinance entirely and just have, you know, no.
Because of Lady Bird Johnson, that's why.
Well, we don't need, well, just do away with the ordinance entirely. People did, got bon appétit for over 200 years and then we perceived the problem, let the problem didn't exist. So just do away with the tariff ordinance.
Well, there is the market approach to zoning, which, you know, I, I've been a longtime advocate of.
You know, I mean, that area, you know, you've got to walk, you've got to walk for 200 and some years without zoning at all, so let's.
No Texas. What's in Texas?
Well, then move to Texas. But you'll have to give up your seat on the court.
Well, there is the laissez faire approach and, uh, there, there may be theoretical law economics sense to that.
I, I just, all I can tell you is, you know, Phil's not here, but if he were, he'd be getting up out of that chair over there right now.
So we've had, so we have a sign ordinance for 34 years and, and, and we got down to arguing about, you know, painting on a house and, or a building in Sperryville, and we, and we argued about how bright the flashing lights are in front of a high school or a corner park. That's how crazy it's gotten.
Well, you know, I have to say that in the 34 years, they're right, we named off about the three and maybe there's one other we forgot about, cases where it, it, it didn't work. But I can tell you from my recollection and, and I think I'm the only one here that was, was participated in that, there, of all the, of all the things in that zoning ordinance, when we got to chapter 12, that took for a long time. And there was a lot of contentious arguing. Uh, there was, there were, there were people of which Phil was one and the RLEP people and sort of, you know, Werner Krebscher and Chris, uh, Lee Bird and all those people, they were adamant that we should have a really restrictive ordinance like what the town of Washington has. And then there were others that expressed sort of the view that you have. And, and I can tell you that all the sizes in there were all some kind of compromise between what Krebscher, who I think was on the planning commission at the time, he, he wanted wherever, wherever it says like 30 feet or 50 feet, I think Werner had it at five or 10. And then he said, come on, Werner, and they pretty much beat him into accepting these numbers, but I can tell you it was a compromise. So.
What's outrageous about all this is that we're talking about all these signs for, for private use and public art and all this. You go out here on the highway, uh, I think I was up coming out of Rockville Road the other night, and my lights flashed, went down 211 towards Little Washington. And holy moly, there were all these state signs everywhere. It must have been 45 or 50. And here's all these signs, you know, and, and that's, I guess, say it's public safety.
That's government speech.
Well, government speech, but.
Well, some of ours, I'm on for a private business.
What? Almost anything you see, though, in the headlights, it is public safety. Don't turn this way, don't go that way, you know.
Edith Joes.
It's, it's outrageous. Down your lights, whatever, deer in the head, you know, this stuff. And, you know, and it's, it's, that's not ugly, but it's public safety. It's crazy. I mean.
Well, the highway department, the biggest violator of the thing, yes, they, they're the ones who go around putting up all these signs to go here and go to this bigger, to go to this restaurant.
If you go from Platte Hill to Massey's Corner, the top of the hill that JJ Hill plays it, you see all these reflective lights there at Massey's Corner, signs.
But you notice something, that even when you get into Colonial Williamsburg, you're running into the same problem. Okay? So, and, and one of the things that's in the town case is a recognition that, look, the prettiest of all jurisdictions are going to have the most restrictive sign or, ordinance. Isn't there a reason for that? Because it's to protect that view shed, it's to protect the reason that tourists want to come there to see Colonial Williamsburg in its 18th century glory, not preceded with by 21st century ugliness. But, you know, again, it's always a trade off. You're not going to have purity in any of these situations. So I'm going to leave you all with, with the, if there's no other worse in a sign ordinance other than a marked dog ordinance to get through any kind of a body.
But it's. Mr. Goff, one thing is you said tonight is not true.
Okay.
You're not leaving us.
I'm what?
You're not leaving us.
He means.
You're not going to leave us.
Leaving the meeting.
You're not leaving us.
You want me to stay?
Come on, man. You're in this, you're in this till the bitter end now.
I've got two, I've got two of those reports tomorrow.
You might leave right now.
But what'd be done by then?
But you're going to be in this. You're supposed to, you keep going. You're going to be in this till the very end.
I think, I think we'll have this game wrapped up like 7:30 or 8:00 AM.
Mr. Frager promised me that after an hour and a half, he's going to start a ruckus so I can split.
Oh, well.
You've got 20 minutes.
Well, let's take a vote, let's take a vote. And first of all, before you dismiss yourself, does any other member of the commission have any questions prompted by our, our discussion so far that they want to ask Mr. Goff before he tries to leave?
I, I actually have one going all the way back to Gilbert, right?
Sure.
So I, I think if I pieced together what you said, if, if it hadn't been a case of two different non-commercial signs, they, they, they could have regulated commercial speech differently than non-commercial speech. Is that, is that an accurate conclusion from what you said about?
Um.
Because you said we regulate commercial speech, but that those were two examples, one was political and one was religious, so they were both non-commercial.
The town Gilbert ordinance treated temporary signs, put them into three or more different
categories. I don't recall exactly how many, but the three operative ones that I remember the court mentioned were temporary directional signs, ideological signs, and political signs. There was no time limit for ideological or political signs. They could stay up forever. Black Lives Matter, hate has no home, or.
Hope no home.
Whatever, you know, whatever it is. And it, and then it had directional signs, there's TED boxes, okay? You know, like the shopping center, the church, you know? And, uh, so these had to be gone within 15 seconds and over the, these over here could stay forever. Uh, and so the court said, well, if they're all ugly, how come you're letting these stay and not these? That means you're taking a viewpoint of these are more or less worthy than these. Uh, and that is something that violates content neutrality.
I guess I'm trying to reconcile that with your other statement later, which is that doesn't negate the extra right to regulate commercial speech. So I'm trying to understand how that might have applied in a sign case. So it sounds like you're saying we do have greater authority to regulate commercial signs. Am I, am I not? Am I right in that?
That is, that is, that is probably all true. But like, you know, like I said earlier, too, if you try to get into prior restraint on political speech, I don't care, you're going to lose. You know, this is not going to happen in the courts. Because that is stacked in favor of free speech. Government regulation of free speech is, uh, per se bad, under the view of the courts and under the First Amendment jurisprudence. Everybody gets to speak and government can't tell people that this viewpoint or that viewpoint is more worthy by, by use of a zoning ordinance to enforce that kind of viewpoint or content discrimination. So it's a, it's a, but there is the recognition under courts that there is a legitimate need for non-fellow operation of things that are distracting and destroying the beauty of a place. And it's easier for a locality who has a tradition of being a beautiful place such as Williamsburg or Rappahannock County to have a more restrictive sign ordinance than you would have in a commercial district while not 17 staffed county.
So you could, I, you could regulate two liter Pepsi for 99 cent versus don't tread on me. But the problem is you still, as a locality, are going to have to, to make the argument why it's in government, government's interest to regulate it.
You're still going to have to show that this is substantial governmental interest and you're still going to have to show that, that there is no viewpoint or content discrimination. So you can't have a different sign ordinance for Pepsi's and then Coke's. They're both ugly soda pop signs. They got to be treated the same, the same as with Nabisco and any other commercial mess. But when you get down into saying you can't put up a political sign even of the same size, that's when you run into a real, real problem.
Would you be of the same opinion if it said Northern Neck Tinsel?
I would be all for it then. I would, I have the urge that you vote for it and a big sign that says we demand more than that tinsel, come back.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So, no, it, it, it's always, you know, you can't come up with the A for R or the answer to every, every imaginable contingency. But you can, once you hear the consensus of the board, recommend to the board, what you think the people of Rappahannock would tolerate as far as.
So, so Mr. Goff, this is the dilemma that, you know, I'm running around my mind. We just finished a comprehensive plan that has, has, that lasted, I guess, a decade. It went through, uh, four county administrators, four zoning administrators, about four different chair people of the planning commission and, uh, you know, and, and finally, you know, it took criticism along the way and we took criticism, did not generate it. Finally, it got generated and it got, you know, edited extensively before it got approved last week. So we went through this complicated process and, and so now we've been assigned a task that has been all the way to the spring court. Most smartest people in the country have heard it, lawyers, chief justice, states have rumbled with it. And we've been assigned a task to write this thing and, uh, you know.
That's why they're assigned to us.
Huh?
That's why they're assigned to us.
We're the smartest people.
You're the chosen ones.
Yeah, yeah, uh-huh, right.
Right, that's the way we.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, uh, so, uh, you know, I, I think, you know, Mr. Conneke here is the smartest person in terms of the law that sits at this table. And I guess kind of, and I think come the first of the year, he won't be here any longer, I guess. And, uh, so then we have somebody new coming on, and I have no idea who that is. So you, you got seven, um, laypeople here with different levels of experience and tasks of doing something that has been to the highest level in this country. And I think it's kind of foolish for us to tackle this, uh, you know, with, with, with the resources that we have. And then we try to tackle it, we put it out there and then all these errors are found and we criticize for submitting this or that, it falls back to the grammar. You know, so I don't, I'm being a little challenged by what we're going to have to do with the resources and talent we have. You know, I mean, am I wrong in that?
Uh, well, I think that, that, I think Mr. Curry will agree with me, that what we envision is that the, the commission will identify what needs to be fixed, why it needs to be fixed, and what the end result is that, that you want to see. You want to tell the board of supervisors what it ought to look like. Before it goes to a public hearing, we will get that input in the form of these sheets from you all. And then we would take those and we would draft what we think accomplishes what you're trying to. what you're trying to do, and send it back to you, then you can say, this is what we recommend, and publish it for a public hearing, but there needs, when you're publishing it for a public hearing, you need to be able to tell the, the public where to go to read the proposed changes, so the proposed changes need to be at least fairly well done, uh, before, because then it's going to get to the board level, they may make changes too, okay? And so, before the sausage comes out in its case all wrapped up and ready to cook, it's going to go through some permutations for sure. I don't think that the layperson board is incapable of doing, I think we have enough good, solid, common sense to look at these things, and I, and if the board and Mr. Curry tell me to identify obvious problems in the list, I can do that, no problem, uh, but in the meantime, really the answer, you know, I think the most pressing thing is, do you want public art, you know? Do you want it or not? Uh, the rest of it's not that broken, that can't be easily. Is that what the BOS is doing, if they really wanted to find this issue of public art more than anything else? It's my understanding, the commission that was given to the commission, that was one on the list.
So, get that and fix the broken parts of this ordinance, and I think if the planning commission is looking at this from the 20,000 foot level saying, we want to regulate this kind of sign, we want to regulate that kind of sign, this way, that way, kick it to, to the three of us, we'll try to put what you desire into legal terms, or tell you, you can't do it.
Who? Michelle, who was that great?
Ms. Summer.
Oh, that's on the street.
So, you know, you may say, well, we want to be able to regulate those real estate signs because, you know, we know you hate realtors, and so, we would say, you can't do it. Or if you want to regulate, you're going to have to do it in a little bit different way, because it's going to be temporary signs that are located on property that's for sale, you know, as opposed to a real, a sign selling real estate. There may be ways you can approach it.
So do you take, do you all take this ordinance and go through it with a marker and say, this needs to go, this needs to go, this needs to go?
Bottom line is, yes. And I've already done it to substantial sections of the code, one of which was acted on by the board some years ago, and that was the elimination of the special use permit, uh, that did not pass. I was asked to do that, and I did it, but it didn't pass, that, I mean, like I said, I don't care, you know, I get paid the same either way, but it's, it's, uh, uh, yeah, I've done it in several sessions, started stuff like that, um, and.
We don't have to do it, might do it.
Huh?
We don't have it here in front of us, might do it.
No, 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 I haven't been, I haven't formally asked to do it, and I, and I don't do, I don't legally represent anybody.
Why does anybody ask you to do that if we need to look at it? If we need to fix what's broken, we got to know what's broken.
And certainly, I think it's entirely reasonable for the board, you know, Mr. Curry can tell me to do that, and I'll do it.
I think what's coming on us is, is to ask for that, if that's what we need, if you can.
That sounds like a motion, somebody seconded it.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, well, I'm trying to figure out the scope of the work, and, and what, you know, and how we handle it.
It's, it's not, not that bad.
Just sort of sound like it.
We've got this template here that, that Mr. Golf has written up, I think we can take this and compare what we have in the zoning ordinance, and we can find, find, find some of those problems.
And, and the facial evaluation stuff, I'm glad to make it, it'd be a one page, one page list, okay, of the stuff that Mr. Conica told us.
It's mostly the definitions and the temporary signs, if you look at section 170 dash 102.
It's not that long.
I mean, you've got three or four categories right away of temporary signs, and I see a mistake right in the first sentence that says, one temporary sign shall be allowed for a period not to exceed 30, and then in perems it says three consecutive days, I think probably they left the zero off, but, all right.
Which, which even if you wanted to allow that, were all temporary signs? How is that enforceable? Did they sneak, how is that enforceable? They sneak out in the middle of the night, take it up, and put it back down?
Right, I mean, that, that's another, and I want to, and that's before you go, uh, and before we deal with this motion that I think is pending, I, I want to ask another question, which I think that's one of the things that's sort of broken, and that is the enforcement, uh, parts of this, uh, or at least it needs to be examined, and the two main things, uh, that I, that I already argued in 1986, when I was zoning administrator, they passed it, there was supposed to be a registration period of non-conforming signs, and at the time they passed it, I knew that I was not going to be around to do it, and I, but I did say, how, how is that going to be enforceable? If something's a non-conforming use that existed before the ordinance was adopted, whether they come in and register, or they don't, if they can prove the sign was there, it's a non-conforming sign, so this whole registry idea is A, a bad idea, B, they're not going to do it, and so, that was supposed to be the baseline for any new sign, so that the zoning administrator, when Michelle came in, and whoever, or the other old zoning administrator, get out the book and say, well, here's the book of registered signs, and here's the book of application, the ones that got approved, and you're not on either list, so guess what, you're illegal.
Well.
But that's not done, we don't have an inventory, and how do we deal with that?
Well, okay, and that's, enforcement requires evidence.
Right.
Uh, not just a complaint or rumor of the work, and enforcement is something, and especially if you're enforcing criminally, which when I wear my other hat, it's Commonwealth's attorney, I'm going to look at a case and say, well, you say the guy was driving drunk, but you don't have a breath analysis test, so guess what, I'm not prosecuting this, it's garbage, get out of here. So, you come into my office, but here's a non-conforming sign, prove it to me.
And you don't have a breath test, though.
Yeah, I don't have a breath test, so they're combined.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so, uh, a lot of this enforcement is nonsense, okay, uh, so enforcement ought to be from the date of complaint, so phrases for the sign, if you've got a duration thing up there, 30 days from the day of the complaint is what you've got to take this down, it'll be a violation, I don't care how long it was there before, the date that we know for sure that I can prove is the date that the complaint, I mean, the letter to, to the violator has been sent, so, it's not that hard to fix either, if that's the approach you want to fix, but that just means that there may be violative signs out there for many long years before there's a complaint, and, and we don't have the resources to be the sign police, you know? So we're asking, okay, you're on Rock Hills Road, we've taken a picture of every sign.
Why do you keep on bringing that up?
I like Rock Hills Road, that's why.
There's a legal sign down there at the marina.
All right, if this is so easy to solve.
That's why they gave it to us.
If this is so easy to solve, then, uh, I'm, do we need to have some public hearings in this?
Yeah.
You, you can't, you can't sit there and enforce a right sign.
I know a public hearing, in the beginning, if you get information on what's the direction of the people.
Not so much before we write something to see if it's right or wrong, well.
And that, that may only be for some of those bigger questions, like, do we want a lot of people to paint this out of the building, non, you know, with non-commercial messages, or, you know, a mural, or public art?
I mean, is this, I mean, what are we talking about? Are we talking about reaching down to the level of art, putting a sign in his front yard, watering himself?
This, the ordinance does reach that.
That ordinance does, but do you want it to? And so, if, if the, if you can identify the areas that you think are appropriate for the ordinance to tou, touch, we can write the ordinance to do that.
I guess it's, it's when you say you decide, I think it more should be the citizens decide to us with input.
Right, and so you're the conduit, the board has identified to receive, assimilate that information.
I don't want to come here next month or a month afterward, because I think I know what people on Lizzie Mills Road, and Chester Gap, and, you know, Nancy Road.
Well, here's what I suggest you do, is that be prepared at your next meeting to, to discuss re-design ordinance, and each of, each of you individually come in and say, this is where I need something to be fixed, in the meantime, if Mr. Curry tells me to send Mr. Conica a list of those things that are ipso facto in need of revision, I will do so before your next meeting.
Does this, does we have a motion to that effect?
Does this will be a one-page list?
I think the ipso facto, yes. Okay, in other words.
It'll be at least the sections that need.
So, I mean, so this list of sections that we're talking about addressing, is that going to elevate the quality of the ordinance to where it's a B or A minus grade, or is it still going to be a C grade?
Well, I, I don't know how to answer that, but I guess, it's, uh, what it's going to do is.
It's an F.
It's, it's going to enable you to inform the public of what they need to come and address with you at a public, at an initial public hearing, and, because there's some of it in there that doesn't need to be fixed, and some of it in there that just, it's fine, but then, there's these bigger topics about, uh, do you want to change such things like sign illumination, and that's a large category that the public could come in and opine about in front of them. Do you want to have public art? That's something, come and get the sense of what they have to say, before you undertake any kind of substantive revision, so, uh, I think that the, the best way to get it started would be for us to come up with the ipso facto list of, these are the things that are obviously broken and need to either repeal entirely, or amend it to conform, uh, with the town of Gilbert case, then that's not a big long list, and then tell them what night you want to have public hearings on these larger issues, okay? That'd be just my suggestion, if the board were to ask me, that would be what I would tell them as well, before they tackle such a, a monumental thing. The leadoff question could be, do we want a sign ordinance now?
Yeah.
Okay, then you're going to have a howl of the crowd in here, when you get input, on a, on a, on a, 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 the app and dog, on the app and dog ordinance, you'll be, you'll, you'll be out of here at two o'clock in the morning with a headache you wouldn't believe.
Mr. Curry, will you encourage the board to give Mr. Golf direction to help us in ways to?
Well, I think I could do that.
Then you could.
If there's ordinance already a resolution actually that says he's in charge of tasking me.
I would, I would do that, frankly.
Would you task him? Would you task him?
I might.
Not taser, but task him.
All right, great. Any further questions for Mr. Golf, because I can see he needs to go some other things right now.
I need to get ready for, you know, Mr. Court. They're all guilty.
You've got 12 hours, you've got 12 hours. They're all, if they weren't, they weren't guilty, they wouldn't have gotten a ticket.
I, I just can't wait, they all just signed.
That's a really good case, and maybe I'll get up and come to them.
Thank you, Mr. Golf. You're very welcome, thank you very much for inviting me, I appreciate it. Good night, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thanks for listening to me.
What, is that this time, you go to Williamsburg? Are you going to bodyguard Chuck?
No, I got the road phone call.
Oh, I thought you were going to go. All right, uh, so, where do we go from here? Uh, we've got, I mean, I had some other issues that we put on here.
With some mannequins.
Uh, what?
Let's just go ahead and mannequin.
People can't do that. So I think we've covered one and two, and three, uh, and sort of four, and five too, and I mean, I covered that with him, so did, I mean, does anybody have anything else they want to address? Because it sounds like we're going to have to wait to get this list, and, uh, to be quite frank about it, I, you know, this may or may not be my last meeting, and it may or may not be Mr. Fraser's last meeting, and depending on who's going to be on the commission next year, uh, you, you may well have a completely different sort of mindset of where you want to go than what, what the current constitution of it is, so I think we ought to just, I think we've done about as much as we could do at this point in time, until there's some clarity there. Who knows, maybe we'll do that, and we'll be stuck in the same rut. Uh, all right, anybody have anything further before I open up the public comment? All right.
Um, this is a little, I, I read through some of the proposed, um, public art section and drafts, et cetera, and, and there's just a couple of bizarre little arguments, one of them was about window signs, and.
Window?
Window signs, yeah, okay, interesting subject, and it talked about, you know, not being more than the first floor, or the second floor, but nowhere in it did it say anything about the window sign blocking the ability for ingress and egress through a window, um, and all I can think of is, if there's a fire, you do not want to have a wooden sign stuck inside the door, so, a window, pardon me, um, that would block, block it, so I'm just throwing that one out because those are the kind of things you bump into later on and say, why didn't you?
Why, yeah, yeah.
Uh, don't, don't want to bump into that again. And the other thing on public art, one of the sections of that draft, 171 dash 004F, said that you cannot have publicly, public art on publicly owned property.
You cannot?
Cannot, that's what it said, and all I, the first thing I thought of is, so you can't have an art show on public property, or you can't put up the love sign on public property, um, and famously during, during the depression, the federal government paid for post offices and public buildings to have murals painted in them as part of the WPA project, and some of those works are considered great works of art, so, um, that's another thought, that if you're going to go the direction of trying to define public art, you need to think about it being in a public place that's, that's where the citizens are, or may not be, and, um, within the question about art, you're all talking about art, uh, nobody's talked about the fact that not all art is on a wall, you touched on it a bit, Al, but what about a piece of sculpture? How do you deal with that? So anyway, it's not just a painting on a wall.
Don't buy and raid between Double Pain and Middleburg, all wheels go that way every, every Sunday in the summer, and there are these ginormous metal sculptures that are often in the field, and then when you look hard, you see them even further off in the woods and stuff, and I mean, they're phenomenal, but they're very hard to locate when you're driving, I think it's kind of dangerous.
Yeah, but the question is, do you allow it if somebody wants to, oh, it's, it's not part of the town now, but if down there where the Black Petal was, they build a bunch of buildings there, and it's still part of the county, or remains part of the county, or whatever, and somebody wants to put a piece of sculpture in the middle of the parking lot.
If it's not visible from, from a public highway, it's not regular.
But it could be.
Okay.
And, and also within that, the question about a public area or in public realm, you could put something in your backyard that's, that can be viewed from the street, that might.
Next, maybe someone's going to build a giant statue of Donald Trump and put it down at Rock Hills.
Well, I know that the Great Wall of Rap, uh, of Richmond Road, that the owner of one side of that thought about getting a big mural painted on it at one time because it's ugly anyway, so anything would make it better, but anyway, those are just little thoughts.
All right, well, I'm sure as the process goes along, you'll keep that in mind, you'll have to remind them, I expect.
And, and I commend you all, but listening to about a Supreme Court case, it's not the funnest thing in the world.
That's what you say.
Well, I like it, you don't like it.
All right, anybody else? Mr. Taylor, who's been sitting so quietly and patiently, Mr. Glenny?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's good.
I mean, Mr. Conica has something to say.
Well, you're not in the public.
Sure, I'm in the public.
Oh, really?
So, uh, this may or may not be your last meeting here, we, we got weather on, uh, Thursday night.
Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday, I was going to count Thursday. But anyway, if, uh, I just want to, uh, this may be your last, last meeting, your, where your chairman and holiday season coming on, we have weather, uh, but I just want to, want to thank you for your leadership this year, and for what, uh, your, your caring and devotion back in county, want to thank you for helping us with issues, getting the con claim done, and the other issues and hindsight that you bring, so I just want to say thank you, in case nobody else does.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, I'm going to say something.
About yourself?
No, not about myself, not much, uh, about you all, uh, because, yep, uh, I guess this is the, this, uh, this may be my last meeting, uh, as chairman or as a member of the commission, and I want to express my thanks to a number of people, uh, first and foremost, I want to express my thanks, it's going to be this Sunday, but I better do it now, because it looks like it's going to snow, but maybe I'll get to do it again. Uh, I want to express my thanks to the Board of Zoning Appeals who nominated me twice for this position, uh, and I want to express my thanks to the Board of Supervisors that appointed me, uh, I want to express my thanks to, uh, Michelle, and she's not here tonight, uh, but Marlena. I want to express my thanks to Michelle, and she's not here tonight, but Marlena and Lauren May, because, as I jokingly said to Mr. Curry about a month or so ago, joking, but in every joke, there's only a little bit of joke, that without our great women behind you, you can't do anything. And those three make this job and the work of the commission go a lot smoother, and they do a lot of things behind the scenes that I guess the commissioners may be aware of, the public may not be so much. The notices, the just getting everything ready for the meetings. And this year in particular, there's been some extra duties because of the COVID situation. So I want to say thank you to them. I want to say thank you to Mr. Curry. He is a great asset to the county. He's a great asset to the commission. I think his knowledge of the law of zoning and planning and so forth is second to nobody in the county. He's not a lawyer, but he could be because he really knows his stuff. And that insight and that, the comments that he makes are really invaluable to the commission. I haven't always, as some people I guess know, Mr. Curry and I haven't always agreed, but you could say that about just about anybody and me, we haven't always agreed. But having said that, nevertheless, he deserves a lot of credit and has my personal appreciation for all the helpful things that he's done in the course of the year that made my job as chairman somewhat easier. And last but not least, I want to thank everybody on the commission for your vote of confidence. You know, it's not too often that somebody gets appointed to a board and at the first meeting is elected chairman. And I've tried to guide the commission to make, get things done. We had more meetings and work sessions this year than I think probably, I mean, I haven't counted them all up, but quite a few times we had a regular meeting and two work sessions. And I think almost every month, we've had at least two meetings and/or work sessions. And we got a lot accomplished. We've focused in on a lot of issues and a lot of, I guess partly one of the benefits of the COVID situation, we've had too many applications to deal with. And we really focused on some of the long-term issues in the comp plan, the zoning ordinance. And again, we haven't always agreed on every single thing, but to me, that's not a minus, that is a plus. That's why there's a commission, because we've got seven different people and seven different points of view sometimes. And that's, that's a good thing because everything gets aired out, and then we send it to the Board of Supervisors with our recommendation, and about half the time, they don't follow it anyway. So whichever way we decide things. So, but that's, as Mr. Goff alluded to, that's why there's that expression, there are two things in life you should never watch being made. One is sausage and the other is legislation. Anyway, it's been a real honor for me to serve in this position. I don't know if I'm going to be reappointed. I expect not. And I think that's unfortunate, but that's not my decision. The only thing I ever wanted to do in public life in Rappahanna County is be on the planning commission because I do have a lot of knowledge and experience in the field, and I thought I could bring some positive results and make a contribution. And I'm really honored to have had that opportunity, and I thank everybody again for it. So with that said, I appreciate your remarks, Mr. Henry, and I guess we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Second? All right, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, we need to adjourn. Thank you all. Thank you, members of the public, for coming.